Hello, everybody. Are we ready to get started? Sorry, I hate to break up the party, but it is only the 2nd of January. Anyway, welcome. Thank you all for coming and thank you. We know that this was a little bit of a hassle for everybody to change the time, but it's easier than changing dates and times and everything. So we appreciate everybody being here. We've not heard from Sean. I don't know if he is coming, but we do have a forum. The agenda is not changing based on...
There's the two time extensions.
They are not listed here?
No, for Babinski and Honey Bee Care.
Okay, they will come up at the end. You will receive Jim's meeting notes. If you have any comments, questions, hearing none may have a motion to accept the meeting notes. Sharon, second.
Second.
Second, Craig, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. You have the draft December 18 minutes. I trust you all had a chance to look at them. Does anybody have any corrections or additions? Motion, please.
I move to accept.
Thank you, Craig. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Delise. All those in favor? Aye. Posed abstention. Correspondence and announcements. Just a reminder that our second meeting of the month also is moving to two weeks. On Tuesday as well?
Yes.
So the meeting again during the 2nd. Tuesday, January 16th. Right? You want to do it in February?
No, sorry.
Yeah. Tuesday, January 16th. And that's because of the president's holiday on Mondays. It will go back to the regular time of 6 o'clock. If there's nothing else, we can begin with new applications. And we have one that we're looking at this evening. That is that of Stephen and Patricia Babatski. 191 White Schoolhouse Road for schedule plan and minor subdivision. Good evening. Come up and present what you would like to do.
Stephen, Patty Babatski. A whole area of the property, 62 acres. And we had that line surveyed and we're selling 27 acres to the Gun Club, which is here. Nothing's going to be built on it. They're not going to expand from, they told us, no expansion of any kind of shooting sports or anything like that. So it'll remain a forest for as long as they're there. That's about it.
Okay. Jim?
So I did take a look at this. In terms of the subdivision itself, I don't see any issues with the proposal subdividing off the land. However, the technical issue that I did find is that what was submitted to us in this proposal is essentially to create a landlocked lot, which we talked about with you guys in the pre-con.
Right.
So the plans that need to be reviewed by the planning board either need to have access to a road or need to show that they're going to be incorporated into an existing lot of the Rod of Gun Club. But as submitted, they're showing us creation of a new lot in and of itself, which is landlocked or can't.
Well, Brent Spohs do have this line that added to... They own that property. So whether John Decker has gone to that for him yet, because it's a two separate... John did the survey for us and them, and then they have yet to do another survey for the Gun Club to get that line raised. Or, you know, they could just add it to that, just make that mine.
Right. And that's the technicality of what we had before. It's not the board can't legally create a landlocked lot.
Right.
So it's hard to review this. Like I said, no issues with what's being proposed, but there's not... I don't think the board can go forward with approving this until that line is shown there that shows that it's going to be incorporated into the adjacent lot. And we have some paperwork, legal paperwork stating the same. Otherwise, I don't think you can do that.
I just, I talked to Brent today, right? And he said he had something that didn't get to you guys tonight because he had a meeting. It might be that, I don't know. I hope.
Yes. So that's the only issue I see, but that is a big issue.
Yeah.
Because it's not a big lot otherwise.
Well, let me open it up to other planning board members who might have questions of the applicants.
I have a question for general. Shouldn't it then just be a lot line adjustment rather than subdivision?
It's one of the same. I mean, a lot line adjustment is a subdivision. It's a type of subdivision, but it has to... The paperwork that we're reviewing has to show that that's what's happening here. What's showing on the map right now is showing the creation of a new lot.
Right.
In and of itself. There's no other information. But a lot line adjustment is a subdivision, technically.
What is planned for the other lot?
That's the rest of our farm. So it will remain a farm.
It's a presidencies.
So all of this is all, that's all wooded. And this is farmland. Woods and state woods.
Anybody else? Do you have a sense of the timeline of when we might receive this information?
Well, UC surveyors way more than I do.
I'd rather not make a guess.
That's for the Gun Club's part of it though, because that's their land.
Is Marie doing this surveying?
John Decker.
No, John Decker.
Talking about, what?
Six months.
Six months.
So we don't have the time.
So this is going to be an actual transfer of property? Yes. Creating a new lot and ceding it to the Gun Club?
Yes.
It'll become their property.
Yeah.
Come with any easements or anything that runs with the land?
No easements, no...
Right away or anything like that?
No, no.
No, that's why they need, it's a landlot.
As far as you haven't continued access to it for some purpose or there's no provision for that or...
Don't really need to go back there.
The nice thing about it is it provides additional noise protection and other issues for the Gun Club and the neighbors. So it's a great enhancement for the Gun Club. So I would hope that would entice them to try and move their part of this along.
Yes.
I'm okay with accepting it. You know, we can accept the application, but it's back to you at that point to, you know, we can schedule it for March, but we can go out two months. Depends on how you... Not March, I mean, what, February or just go March at this point?
Depends on the other discussion meeting. So March will give them more time to get it in.
Right. I don't think the board can act on this application until we have that information stated that they are going to sort that. So we can schedule a public hearing, but until that paperwork comes in, we will keep rescheduling the public hearings because there's no action to take, especially if there's no comments.
So why don't we accept it and schedule it for March?
Okay.
In the hopes...
And that, we're telling them they need to get their survey done to prove that it's going to be attached to part of their land.
Correct.
It's not landlocked.
Yeah.
And then we need this updated to show that as well. So we need the paperwork in writing, you know, the deed changes or whatever. And then we need this to actually have, essentially just a little C that goes across the property showing that it will be incorporated into an adjacent lot. So you'll have to update yours, have yours updated as well.
And Decker will go pull that stuff on?
Yeah, he'll probably put a note on there as well.
Yeah. It's really the simple next couple of steps. I know, I know, I know. Anybody have any issues receiving this way?
No. Sounds good.
All right. Then Jim, I believe we have a draft procedural resolution.
Aye.
Which you may have to tweak a little bit.
I do, I just realized.
We're just going to go through the draft procedural resolution.
Okay.
So the draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration for the minor subdivision, which will eventually be a lot line adjustment for the application by Stephen and Patricia Babatski, hundred time quote, chapter 101, accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public, classifying the actions listed under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. Scheduling the public hearing for March 5th?
Fourth.
March 4th.
Is there no site visit?
At 6:15. And then I accidentally deleted that. And we can schedule a site visit if you'd like to. I did not put that in because somehow I deleted that out of the resolution. But we can schedule a site visit and we need people to go.
Who would like to go?
I'll go.
Elise? And I'd like to go with Elise.
I could go.
Okay. Elise and Sharon. Yeah, let's, I mean, the site visit isn't going to be impacted by waiting for the information to change within the survey. So let's, it gives you a couple of months to do it in case the weather isn't with us. So, all right. May I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Sharon, second.
Second.
Craig, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We have a couple of minutes. Public hearing, 7:35.
See you tomorrow.
Okay. Just for this one. Don't get used to it.
Just for this one.
All right. So the first public hearing for this evening is Darren Prince and Polly Swiss, Akron Hook Road. Site plan review and construction of a single-family dwelling, covered terrace and in-ground pool fence. Is there anyone here representing Prince and Swiss? They are still awaiting, were waiting for a bit of information.
Yeah, they haven't even finished the public hearing. So it's rescheduled.
And so you're, March 4th, you're proposing?
Melanie, what's the address?
It's...
It doesn't have an address because it's just a...
It's a lot right now.
So it's on, is it Akron? Akron Hook?
Part of the Mans, what was Mansackening.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's an awful lot that's pending on this. So is March 4th too soon? All right, let's go to, let's go to March 4th. I think that's enough. All right. May I have a motion to continue the public hearing until March 4th?
So moved.
Thank you. Edna, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. The next public hearing scheduled for this evening is Quizicar, 365 Ryan Cliff Road, site plan and special use permit, renovation to a two-family residence. Good evening, Warren.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Okay. So this is an existing, appears to be a one-story house from the road. It's a very linear ranch-style house, but the grade drops away from mine did, so it's sort of a walkout at lower level. And so the main floor is currently a one unit and lower level is a second unit. It will remain a two-family home. The new owners would like to refresh the look of the house. It's vinyl siding. It almost looks like a manufactured home on the road right now, not very to be possessing. And so what we're proposing to do is to remove vinyl siding, to replace the windows, to replace the siding, to raise the pitch of the roof, so it has a little more, a presence of actual more sealant type inside because it's quite low, and then to really renovate the floor plan, but it will remain a two-bedroom house. It's quite small, 1,600 square feet in the main floor and about half that usable in the lower level. And, you know, revamp floor plan and refinish it and so forth, but no increase in number of bedrooms, no change in the septic system. And the one thing we're doing is we're adding on the extreme north end, what is now sort of a covered shed will become a carport. So there will be covered parking for one vehicle attached to the house adjacent to the new front entrance. There is no front entrance facing the road now. And then the entrance, the lower level, which is around on the back, will be parking at the other end of the house for that. So there will not be parking right along the road, which there is right now. So that is pretty much the plan for the house. No change in the footprint of the house. Again, I would do enclosing a little shed area to make it a carport, but not expanding it. I'm happy to answer questions.
Jim, any additional comments?
Well, nothing new from last time. I think the questions I had were both admired or answered by Warren, so I'll get there.
Who conducted the site visit?
Sure.
All right. Who would like to report first? Sean's not here. I would like to hear from Sean.
The historical committee sent in a written report that covered it extremely well. They covered all the important points. We didn't have any issues with it. It's an improvement. It's right along the road, going into Bryan Cliff. It's close to the road. It looks so big from pictures in the back, but it's not really that big. But it'll just be a big improvement. But we really didn't have any problems with it.
Any word numbers?
You had said earlier, two-family, is it a two-family or two-bedroom?
No, it's two-family.
So there is a separate unit that's...
There is a single bedroom in the unit with the balcony below and the main floor has two bedrooms.
And there's no opportunity to come join those? It's going to remain a...
No, they're completely separate.
Okay. And is there anything about the existing house that's being maintained, retained, or is it a tear down?
No, it's not a tear down. The footprints remain the same. The foundations are remaining the same.
Okay.
Most of the walls are the same. We're simply cutting the roof off at the ease and raising the pitch.
Okay.
Mostly for, well, aesthetic, but also for interior place.
Okay.
But it's not intended to be a tear down.
That's, I find that encouraging because I am a little bit cautious about, even something that's not valued currently for its historical importance. Keeping things the way they are in a historic district is an important feature, even if that's something that's just part of the general fabric. So I'm glad that it's staying, you know, it's an upgrade and improvement of what's already there.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Let's see, the public. I almost forgot the public. So a public hearing? Anybody here wishing to comment on this application? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Edna, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention. Jim, we have an approval resolution?
Draft approval resolution for the board's consideration to take for Quizicar LLC for site plan and special use permit with 365 Ryan Cliff Road within the RM1 zoning district, the RCO overlay, reaffirming the proposed actions type 2 under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded upon submitted information and reviews undertaking, finding that the work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit, finding the proposed working intended use consistent with the general standards for special use permits and granting a special use permit. And with respect to the application for site plan approval, finding the working intended use consistent with time quote, chapter 125, and approving the application inclusive of the materials in site plan by Warren Temple Smith dated August 1st, 2023, and authorizing the plan board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the application's satisfaction of the three conditions.
May your motion?
So moved.
Second motion by Sharon, second by Elise. I'll call the board. Elise?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And then both aye. Thank you, Warren. Good luck to your client. The next public hearing for this evening is Jeffrey Valenti, 6830 Route 9, site plan review change and use to a dental office. We are waiting for, waiting on this Department of Health. Is there, I don't think there's anything else to add in terms of new information. So is there anyone here from the public wishes to comment on this? This is the former pet country north of the village. If none, may I have a motion to continue also this public hearing until March 4th?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Edna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. The last new, last public hearing for this evening is Rockledge, 492 Akron Hook Road. Site plan approval, special use permit, wetlands permit for funding the review. Hi. All right. So we can begin by saying that at the last meeting, we agreed to schedule a special meeting, if you all recall, and we have been working actively to do that. Gretchen has been crunching dates and been reaching out to all of the interested parties. And at this point, I believe, unless, we didn't hear back from everybody that we reached out to, including members of the planning board, but at this point, we would like to look at the February 4th meeting, correct? Is it?
February 5th, apologies.
Have you made progress in assembling your team?
Yes, we have. Well, just one question, and I had reached out to Melody with regard to if at the next meeting, if it's February 5th, if it would be possible to have, as a hybrid meeting with Zoom capabilities, if some of the consultants, some projects live out of state and whether or not that would be available for the board.
I think Jim replied that he thought he could make that work. My experience, hybrid meetings can be tricky, but we certainly will.
Yeah, and it's my clar, it's hybrid only for your consultant team to come in. It's not a public hybrid meeting. It's still an in-person meeting here in town hall. So it'll just be some of your team that would be calling it on a hybrid. But you'll be here in person.
Okay.
Right?
That would be great.
Now is that, everybody's good, I mean, this is a special meeting, so my hope is that none of you are on vacation and traveling to the South Seas, but you're all going to be available for this meeting because it's important, I think, that everybody be here. We have not gotten a final confirmation from CPL, but post this meeting this evening, we will be notifying them that that is when the meeting will occur and that we are expecting representation from their firm at that.
Okay.
Is there anything else you need to comment about that?
No, I mean, there's nothing new. You guys have provided all the information we requested. CPL has given you back, I think, all the letters, responses. You provide us with the update to the AF, so there's some tweaks. I guess some things were done before. So I think we have everything in the file that we need at this point. And then you and I were going to talk about, at the next meeting, we're kind of, we'll put Johnny call the reset, right? So I'll present a little bit kind of the planning board side, and you'll do some presentation on your end.
Sure.
I should probably coordinate to make sure we're not overlapping on some of that. And then we'll open it up for public discussion.
And that is part of the reason Gretchen's suggestion that some of these meetings, some of these public hearings for this evening are being continued to the March 4th meeting instead of the February meeting, so that we're allowing sufficient amount of time in this meeting to not be rushed through this process. So the ones that we could kick further out, it's why the scheduling's been difficult because people are looking to stay on their track. And what we understand that this is important to all concerned parties. So that's the direction we're going to go.
Great.
And it will be 6 o'clock?
The meeting will start at 6 o'clock.
There is more other thing on the agenda that I, which is also Mark's, my street service, so.
So it's up to Mark to keep that short. It's up to Mark. It's the Mark meeting. And you're in charge of the scheduling for that. And we've closed the public hearing. Do anything else new on that evening? Okay. So folks, you know, we really have worked hard to get this set up and to make it dedicated to the conversation around this application.
So Melanie, I'm sorry, you said the public hearing is closed, so no public comments at this point or...
It's a special meeting for this discussion, so it's not a public hearing, you're correct. But I don't know that we can prevent public comment.
Technically, I think it is a public hearing. It's an extension of our public hearing. It's the next one we're going to do.
Yeah, we'll be continuing. So, yeah.
The public hearing's still open.
I would ask for your indulgence in allowing us to get through the presentations.
Right.
So that we can make that understandable and cohesive. I don't even want to try to guess because my memory, you know, is failing as to how long we've been looking at this, so.
10 years? 10 years?
Possibly. But anyway, the point is we all need to reset our understanding of where we've been, the process we've gone through, all of the iterations of this project we've looked at, the responses, the back and forth, the concerns of the neighbors. And I think we, you know, before we jump into the full seeker review process and all of that, we want to make sure that we're as much on the same page as we can be in terms of what our understanding of the project is at this moment in time. Not what it's been, not where we've been, but where are we now and where are we looking to go? So, but that being said, you're here tonight. It still is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who wishes to make any comment tonight?
No, but thank you for your due diligence on this.
Okay. Anybody, anything else from the planning board members? A great deal of appreciation goes to Gretchen. You know, in between all of this, you know, we've had some holidays thrown in there and a few things and scheduling issues, but she's worked very hard to try and look ahead and project what's coming up on our agenda and when, when applications will be coming in and when we came into certain things. So we just want to extend appreciation and try to keep us on track.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you, Gretchen. All right. So may I hear a motion to continue the public hearing until February 5th, at which time we'll be conducting a special meeting on this application?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries.
Thank you. And I'll, we'll work with you. I've started to look back at this project.
Yeah, I put some slides together. I just want to make sure we're not getting any, it's going to take a lot of time, that's all.
And if you're not running out, or if you spend a few minutes with him, I have something for you. Just have a few more, Mr. Rumpf. You've got a second?
Yeah, I was actually, I think one of my items is for the Dave Street.
Okay. All right. So that being said, then we won't have been doing ZVA referrals. We have three for this evening. Mead, 23 Winston Drive, Piscacuta, and 43 Wardenburg Road and Dave Street Service 13 are this way. So Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
So we'll start with Jody Mead. Again, it's a ZVA referral. They're applying for an area variance. Okay. So the property that we're looking at here, probably ZVA is looking at, is on Winston Drive, and it's a loop. So there are three parcels inside, essentially, it's a large bull's act, for lack of a better term, and it's a parcel outlined here in yellow. There's an existing house showing this. And so these ZVA referrals require some discussion because there's some elements to be discussed. What they're showing here on the plans, is the existing house and the deck, a hot tub that's there and an existing fence. What they're proposing to do is to put in an in-ground pool and a 12-foot shed, it's a 12-foot shed, and then a fence that will go around it, a foot of wood fence that will go around it. The issue of it being for the ZVA is because the pool and the shed are actually in front of the house. And the reason for that is that this house's property is essentially ringed on, you know, two plus sides by the road. So it's in front of the, it's in front of the structure. The road runs here, so you have to do a line kind of parallel to the road. And so they're coming in, they're being in front of the existing structure in front of the house, the way it, the way it lays out.[1736.13] So, she's applying for a 66-foot front yard variance, oh, it's a distance, the distance end too, because it's an R25. So it's a 66-foot front yard variance, installation of the pool, 56 feet for the shed, 58 feet one inch, or something I honestly couldn't read on the application paperwork, I wasn't sure what it was. And it's essentially to put in these, these elements that you see here from the front row, because it's in front of the house. Well, it does appear there's plenty of room to install the pool in the rear of the house based on the lot size. Doing so would likely require the removal of a lot of trees. This lot is mostly tree in the back here, and as far as I can tell, the tree line runs pretty much along where that, you know, that blue line is. The blue line, it leaves a 100-foot setback from the road. So again, everything is kind of, it's a setback, it's kind of in front of the house. I don't know what the height of the proposed shed is. I do know it's 12 by 18 for a footprint. I think that's something the ZVA should consider when they're looking at this.
Do we know it's a shed or is it a pool house or?
It's legal as a shed.
Some house.
But I'm sure it's a house. I guess.
For the pool. Well, okay. But it's associated with mechanical support of the floor.
Yeah, but that, yeah, it's. I do think the shed could go elsewhere, maybe behind the pool in the house, and make it less visible from the road. They can be placed along a tree line, just a pad underneath them. But that, you know, that's up to the ZVA's consideration. I also asked that maybe they consider just adding, you know, one of the plans that I always ask for, that the pool surrounds, having known this is consistent with the New York State Code requirements for a pool, but only adding a four-foot fence. I don't review the fences for code. I'm not sure if that is, but that one should be on there. But overall, you know, with all that, I think, from my review of it, that the planning board could respond back, saying that the requested variance has raised no significant planning or environmental concerns for the construction of the pool and shed. However, there might be better options for the placement of the shed further into the parcel, maybe less visible from the road. Recommend that the ZVA request additional details on the shed, maybe even a rendering, especially against a custom build, related to the height of the shed, maybe the color of the shed, just so they can see how it integrates into the site and the neighborhood, and they do often request that. And then that they just rely upon their own study of the facts and decide in the application in accordance with Town Code Chapter 125 and input of neighboring property owners. So I don't know, there's a lot for us to discuss, I just think there's some things the ZVA could consider.
Well, I, I personally, you know, the ZVA has requested in the past that when we have substantive comments about what we're referring to them, we do that, and I like what you've got in number two, because I think in my mind, there's a lot of unanswered questions about the shed. You know, it's a decent-sized shed, 12 by 18 is not teeny. It's a good-sized thing, and I do wonder if it doesn't become more of a pool house or if there are other functions that might take place there. So I would support, you know, making number two in this referral as fulsome as possible in terms of telling them that these are questions that are outstanding from at least my perspective here.
So I added that we, you know, specifically refer to the shed height, maybe request a rendering.
Well, I think they should. Well, and any future adaptation that might occur to the building, because shed doesn't give me much to go on in terms of use. It's a pretty generic term.
She's adding storage and mechanicals.
Oh, I didn't.
There's a layer question too.
No, no. Now, now it's only mechanicals.
It's a large shed for mechanicals.
It is a large shed for mechanicals, and, you know, it would be better to know all of the potential uses here now, rather than to have to catch up with it later. Any, any other comments on this one? Jim, your honor, is everyone okay with the draft referral that Jim has in his notes, which is right here before us?
Yeah, pretty much what I just read.
Yeah.
Essentially saying that, I find the variance has raised no significant issues, but we would request, they would request additional details so they fully understand what's proposed, what the size and height is, and obviously that's study of the facts.
And motion? Oh, well, thanks, Delise. Second, second, followers in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. Next in the agenda is Pisa Crida or 43 Wardenburg Road. This is where I attached, I'm in close.
They are actually the fourth planning board, if you remember.
This is the sort of arbor-like.
This was the property on Wardenburg Road, where we reviewed essentially a roofed structure, but it was open on all sides. Remember, it was behind the house from Wardenburg Road, way back up on the, on the property.
It was a bull shed.
Yeah.
It's an open bull shed.
So they are applying, it's not historic property, though it is on Wardenburg Road. It is the fourth accessory structure, and therefore requires a special use permit, which is by the, for the planning board, and they need a variance for the overall square footage of the roofed accessory structure, because it's over the maximum of, I think it's 1,500 square feet by 389 square feet, and that's what they're applying for for variance. Don't see any issues with the 389 feet for the structure. It's setback in there, it is a large parcel, you know, we'll review it on our own for, at another time. So I had the standard applied for this, that the variance raises no significant planning or environmental concerns for construction of the roofed accessory structure, over the maximum square footage compared by zoning. They're recommending the ZVA apply on their own study of the facts and neighboring, and input of neighboring property owners.
Motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. The last ZVA referral for this evening is Dave's Tree Service 13 Arbor Way, Route 9G.
This is, the reason that Mark is still here.
And he likes our company.
That's it.
No place better to go than Tuesday.
So if you remember, I think most of that I'll do on the board over here, we did Dave's Tree. He's now built this structure, which you're all aware of, on 9G, put in the drive, and then the building is the back, and there was a proposed sign that was going to go in, and at the time, the planning board essentially said that the sign needed to be constructed and built to Town Code standards. Dave's has come in for a variance for replacement of the tree, of the tree, replacement of the sign up here by the road, which is like seven feet off of the right-of-way. The reason I bring this one up, and you can one have some discussion on this, is that, I'll just kind of go through my notes. So Dave's Tree received a planning board approval for construction of the structure and associated sign at the January 16, 2021 planning board meeting. Upon the, one of the, the only condition within the approval, that the applicant reviewed and revised the sign if it consisted of zoning code regulations per Chapter 125. We now have an application for the ZVA requesting an area variance to permit the sign to be located seven feet from the property line where 20 feet is required. As we noted in the past, the town zoning regulations have created issues related to signage size for commercial uses along busier, higher-speed roads in the town. However, this is a request for placement closer to the road for better visibility, and the sign itself was conditionally approved, subject to any of those requirements, back when the planning board reviewed it. There was significant discussion of the sign design and location, given that it's in the gateway area of the town on 9G. And the request for a variance placement seems to be somewhat inconsistent with prior efforts to determine the details as to where it would be located in the sign itself. Also wanted to mention that at the planning board meeting, we had asked Dave if he could consider removing the billboard, because it is in the gateway area of the town, and it is a non-performing sign as the code stands today. It's an off-site billboard, which is prohibited by this code. However, since that was in existence at the time the code was written, it was permitted to remain. Back when the code was written, the property owner should have received a letter from the town stating that in the years the billboard could remain. I don't believe that ever happened. I don't believe that those letters were sent out when the code was updated, so there's no requirement, I guess, that the billboard be removed, because that notification was never given. The applicant didn't promise that their sign could be removed, but did say that they would consider it, because at the time, the board reviewed this, it was under active contract. Anyway, essentially what I'm saying is, I believe that the ZVA should talk about the billboard and ask if it is still under, if it's still under a.
It was a lease.
A lease, right.
But I don't ever recall if we got the information specific as to the length of the lease.
We just.
It's for another two years.
Right. So I guess my, you know, just to kind of summarize it, my thought is that if the town, and this is something the ZVA and John lines up legally, but if the town is looking at providing a variance for one sign, I think we should be looking at whether or not we want to keep the existing non-performing sign on the site as well, and I think the ZVA is within their right, but they have to determine that to ask if that billboard can come down. If they want relief on one sign, I think that the, the other one should be considered, whether or not it should remain.
Or that they agree not to renew the lease at the end of two years.
Well, right, it doesn't necessarily have to come down now, but maybe at the end of the two years. And if that is not done, I do think that the ZVA should consider asking the zoning administrator to submit a letter to the property owner stating that this is the time at which your clock starts for removal of billboard, because it is not something that necessarily wanted in the gateway, based on discussions I've had in the past. So if it's not voluntarily removed, I think the town could consider starting that clock. Now, the clock is pretty long. I think when the code was written, the maximum amount of the value, it's based on the value of the billboard, the maximum amount of the value was $10,000. I'm quite confident that billboard is worth at least $10,000, so we're looking at a minimum of 10 years before the billboard will be gone, based on the code, maybe longer. It all depends on the formula. So if it does go to set, starting a clock, if we, if the town were to do that, it's not going away anytime soon, at least a decade, from what I can tell. But based on that, my recommendations for the referral response, and if you can edit it, change it, whatever you would like to do, just my recommendation, is that the, the sign itself was, was not necessarily approved by the planning board, was a condition of approval, and asked that the ZVA confirm the sign meets the code requirements, as was a condition of the approval in 2021. Recommend that the ZVA request the applicant remove the billboard on the site as it is in the gateway area of the code, and would have been required to have been removed, had proper notice been given several years ago. Recommend the zoning board appeals, require the applicant contact NICE dot region agents to ensure there are no concerns related to the right-of-way or the proximity of the sign to the right-of-way, and then recommend that the ZVA reply on their own study of the facts and consideration of neighboring property owners. Maybe, I was just gonna say, maybe based on my, my reading it out now loud, I might want to tone down number two a little bit, instead of requesting it be removed to discuss removal of the billboard. Maybe that's a little too direct. But other than that, that was my, that was my thoughts on it, so, yeah.
So, and I talked a little bit with Seth, so I remember at one of the meetings, Kim Garrison was there, and then she said that these billboards were part of the Beautification Act, was it 19?
Labor Johnson.
1965. And so, come to that, there, there was something tied to it that made it difficult. Yeah, I, I guess all I want to say is, if we, I, because I don't remember the, you know, Kim brought it up, and there was, there was a legal, there was some legality about those, about those billboards. And so I just.
You had to make them beautiful?
Maybe they were considered beautiful in 1965.
I don't think so.
But, but anyway, I just want to, there may be some legal, if I recall, there was some legal hook to it, and I just, and, and so I went back and just went through the process, because I was here before, I was here in '22 for, it was a referral from the planning board, so it was on August 18th, 2022, in front of the board, and, you know, for the sign, it says that sign does not raise planning or environmental concerns, recommends that the zoning administrator move to the permit process, permit review process forward in accordance with the criteria set forth in the code. And so what I don't know is, and I think, Seth and I were looking at it, I think part of it is Michael might have talked to, I think, I want to see if Michael reached out to Kim, and if there, if there was some legal issue, or not issue, some, some legal item, I'll just say, with regard to those billboards.
Protection?
Not sure.
Well, of course. We have historic buildings of national significance that are not protected in this town.
This, you know, Kim brought something up, so I just want to chase it down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm looking at something right now, which says the cornerstone of the initiative would be the Highway Beautification Act of 1965, which called for control of outdoor advertising, including removal of certain types of signs along the nation's growing interstate system and the existing federal maybe primary system. So, there, yeah, I, I, you'd have to look specifically at all of the details, because one would think that controlling outdoor advertising and removing certain types would go against your argument, but.
Well, but, you know, Kim brought, I remember.
Well, you know, Kim, you know, Kim's at the ZVA, and so we can certainly make that note, and just, I did, you know, the legality of it from the previous discussion, I vaguely remember something like that, I think I might remember it slightly differently. But, you know, she's, she's looking at it, but I do think, we had a long discussion about it, and I think, you know, my, my opinion is the town's planner, based on, you know, we did an 9G study, which you're also aware of, part of Ruby's coming in, is that there is a desire to really keep 9G as a, as a gateway into town, and the billboard doesn't really fit that mold. And so we'd asked, you know, I pushed, I think, somewhat hard when the planning board review was going on, to try and get that removed, and if we didn't, it didn't happen, so I'm just suggesting that the ZVA ask again. John and Kim need to decide, you know, what the legality is and how that may or may not fit into the review of both of the variance, from a legal perspective. I think they can look at it from a whole sign package perspective for the site.
Sure.
Probably we've done in other places. So it's just a recommendation to the ZVA, and obviously they're going to take it under review and what the consideration is, but.
That's my memory.
And I did, I did speak to Dave, and Dave, you know, after the lease is up after two years, you know, come and speak, I, you know, just talk to Dave about it, you know, or I'll send Ben, you know, the lease is still under lease for a couple of years, but after that, you know.
And the need to go closer to the road is because?
So I did a whole presentation to the ZVA last week.
Give me a short presentation.
Short presentation. So, well, in that section of New York State Route 9G, the right-of-way is 90 feet wide, right? And so typically, our right-of-ways are around 50 feet wide. And so in this case, by pushing, you know, and, and keeping 20 feet off of the, off of the right-of-way line, there's actually a utility pole close by. Topographically, there's only one loc, one real location for the sign. If you go on the south side of the entrance, it gets pushed right up against the property line, there's some drainage there, right where the 120 is, there's actually, and I have some additional joints here, there's, there's a culvert there, sign couldn't go in that location, right where, right where the, it's shown, it's actually a little mound right there, and so there's some drainage, there's some drainage located, that's a mound, there's drainage located underneath, underneath the entrance. And then right where the PR of the post is, there's also a swale there. So it's a limited location where you can put the sign. And then further back that you go, in other words, back towards the existing gravel driveway, there's a, and there you go, right there. You see, right there, you can see where Dave's sign is now, right? Right there. Yeah, there's the drainage, and then drainage on the other side, and right where that utility pole is, you see the mound there, right where he has his sign right now? Well, then you look back, you look to the north, and you see that hill right there. And so it's almost, if you go, if you probably go a couple car lengths back from where that car is right there, that's, that's the first place you'll be able to see the sign because of that hill. It's really limit, a really limited location.
But it really is this, but as I recall, the discussions, this is not a location that the public needs to necessarily, there's not meetings going on all the time, this is not a regular, you know, it's more of an advertising sign than a weight-bearing sign in my, not asking you to confirm that, but.
Yeah, okay. And so it's strictly for visibility of the sign, that was the reason. And so, and also, because of, you know, truthfully, another application that was in front of the ZVA for Ruby's sign, Seth went and did a, I think, study, a sign that was on Route 9 and 19 corridor.
Close it off.
Okay, and.
Thank you, Seth. Either way, man.
97% of the signs do not need a setback, it's not a requirement for the right-of-way. So it was placed there merely for, you know, best of visibility.
My mother would say, that doesn't make it right.
Yeah, and it's also going to continue to be the case unless all new signs are moved to the set.
Unless it's a go-through.
Like, we'll never get there, and we use that as an excuse.
When the code was written, there was something in the code that said the signs had to come into conformity with your rule. That, that obviously was not done back in the day.
Okay.
So it, it is in the code, we're well past that five-year period, I believe it is. So yes, there are a lot of non-performing signs in town, but by code, the way that when the code was written, they should have all come into conformity with the code at that time.
The question that I have is, how much has the road bed changed since this was laid out?
Which road?
The 9G.
No.
Isn't that where the turn lane is?
Turn lane is stopped by itself.
It's not here.
That's, that's, that's.
Turn lane is parked itself.
Okay, all right.
It's down past.
I thought they were.
No.
Yeah, all right.
Just as a reminder to myself, was the sign the right size?
Yes.
Was it larger than usual? Or was it?
No, the sign, the sign meets, the sign dimensions.
Yeah.
Meet the code.
It's not showing it, but it's down here.
Okay.
It's merely, it's merely the location of the sign on the property.
Okay. Jim has expressed his opinion and has reported and informed parts to this referral. Any comments on the details of the referral? Anything that we would like to see changed or any work with this? Thank you.
I am going to pull back on number two where it says, request the applicant remove the billboard to say the, request the applicant, that the ZVA request the applicant consider removing billboard. I don't know, unless you want it.
Or commit to consider.
Consider or commit to.
Um, because obviously if he's got a lease arrangement right now, he's not in a position to do something, like to agree to do something in the future.
I think if, if there's a chance to do it, it's this time. So that, that's my recommendation.
Is the sign a source of income for Dave?
Yes, it is. The lease.
And at my recollection, is the lease was in force when Dave bought the property?
It, it was. Yes, it was.
Any other comments? May have, are there any other changes or is someone ready to move this referral? Thank you. And a second? Again, thank you, Sharon. All those in favor. I have a first extension. Okay. And then the last item.
We have two timeline extensions.
Two timeline extensions. Okay.
The first timeline extension is for Thomas Babinski. I can pull up the plans if anyone wants to see those. This is a recent referral, actually.
So he still has time left on this from May 6th, right? He just has no expectation that he'll.
He has no contractor. He just wants to make sure he does it now.
Is in court. Okay. So the, the problem here is the lack of a contractor.
Yep. So if everyone remembers, we just reviewed this one recently, the guest house that was backed up on kind of the back corner of the lot. It's kind of built into the hillside a little bit. And we had discussions about approximated one of the other houses. But yeah, as Gretchen said, he has no expectation he's going to be able to get a contractor in in a timely manner to move forward. So he is requesting an extension for the end date of satisfaction requirements from site plan approval to go from May 6th, 2024 to November 6th, 2024, which will make it a one year. Give essentially one year to, to get something moving so that he can bring the plans in to be stamped and signed. The special use permit is okay at the moment, and the weapons permit available for two years. So neither of those are issues. Just to say.
I move that we grant the second.
Second.
You share those in favor?
Aye.
Please, motion, motion carries.
And the final one that came in was from Honeybee Child Care. If you all remember the child care that was getting into Fern Cliff, into building there. She has requested an extension because she needs to secure some additional funding for the project before she can move forward. And asked that the site plan be extended six months from December 28th, 2023, which was a couple of days ago, but she did request it before the end date. So we did get it in the queue. So before, from September 28th, when the plans were signed, to June 28th, 2024.
Again, I move that we grant. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension. Okay. One last, did a sort of administrative business with Michael's departure. Michael was serving as the vice chair, and they are still participating in the pre-conference meetings. And I would like to make a recommendation that Sharon be appointed vice chair to continue in that position as the second attendee at pre-conference meetings. Is that something that someone can make a motion on? So, thank you, Seth.
I'll move that. Can we do that?
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension. And it was with her agreement, I think, just. That being said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension. Thanks very much. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
See you in a couple weeks.